I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Village Board for August 26, 2025. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Niki Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six.
This time we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. No public comment, this would conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from July 29, 2025 Village Board meeting?
There's a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $3,805,253.53. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion, second, do we have discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Community and economic development ordinance granting variations related to mechanical equipment in the front yard at 1050 Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion? Anybody, Walter?
The purpose of the application is to allow mechanical equipment and screening for proposed EV charging station at the Pilot Gas Station on Bussy Road. The CDC voted 4-0 to recommend approval.
Are they taking the property to the south of that?
No. No, it would be, they would be using the parking spaces to the north.
Along Route 83?
Uh, no, along.
Mark?
Tower Lane?
Mark Street, thank you.
Okay. That's a pretty crowded corner to begin with. Someone hear from Pilot? Hi Greg. It's a pretty congested corner.
If you look at it really closely, it's pretty wide open, there's a lot of surrounding.
Okay, and you said CDC approved?
Yes. Just to be clear, they're not adding any more parking spaces. The parking spaces would be where the existing ones are. The variations for the EV equipment and the screening of the EV equipment.
Right, any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting special use permit motor vehicle repair and/or service at 600 Devon. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion? Walter?
The purpose of this application is to grant a special use permit to allow the business High of International to conduct business in the building. They would be repairing, servicing proprietary lift equipment that this company sells. And they would be occupying a portion of the new building that's being constructed on Devon. And they agreed with the conditions of approval, which include a triple catch basin and the CDC recommended approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting variation electronic message sign location at 1280 North Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Walter, any discussion?
Just a little. On Time Messenger wants to add an electronic message board to their existing sign. Everything about the sign that they're proposing complies with our requirements but for the fact that it's within a thousand feet of another one. CDC recommended approval of the application.
And the thousand feet, we're in the process of changing that anyways, correct?
Correct.
Any questions from the board?
Is it a thousand feet for another sign they have or another business sign?
From another electronic message sign.
From the same business?
No, no, just any other electronic message sign that exists within a thousand feet.
We're getting ready to rewrite that.
Okay.
Any other question from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance granting special use permit professional office at 611 North Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Walter, discussion?
Just a couple comments. It's a little unfortunate that the property owner has to go through this process because it is an office building, but it happens to be in an industrial zoning district which allows office only as a special use.
Okay, any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five, ordinance granting variation fence in the front yard at 185 May. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Walter?
The applicant's requesting a variation to construct a fence in the front yard of their property. And the, if you've visited the property or read the material in the packet, the lot is rather unusual in that the, they have a very, let's just say minimal backyard currently. And so they're looking to enclose space to provide some usable outdoor space on their lot. And the CDC recommended approval.
How tall is the fence?
The recommendation is that it be five-foot vinyl with a one-foot lattice at the top.
Because the picture on the top looks like it's solid.
Yeah. That's what they propose, but the recommendation is solid five-feet lattice on the top foot.
Okay. Any questions from our board?
Does this enclose the house, like in the front yard? Is it covering?
Yeah.
Do we have any others like that?
This is a unique one because this house is set all the way back on the property. It's on the back end of the property.
Yeah.
So their backyard is actually all front yard.
Got it.
So it looks like there will be a gate where the sidewalk is all, I mean, it's a big fence.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's 250, almost 300-plus feet in fence.
I'm sorry.
So.
You got a six-foot fence.
Five foot with a one-foot lattice. So you can see in. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. I need a motion to request to table the support of a Class B Cook County property tax incentive for 485 Paldland Drive, Benson, Illinois. You have a motion to table this.
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion is second, any discussion on this? We're just going to table it per the lawyer's request, Walter, correct?
Correct.
Having a motion, second, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Motion to table, yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion to table carries. Also, I need a motion to table under finance ordinance abating the tax here to forward levy for the year 2025 to pay debt service on general obligation bonds, alternative revenue sources for the village of Bensonville, counties of Cook and DuPage, Illinois. Is there a motion to table?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is a second, any discussion?
This is usually tied to the tax levy and it'll be brought back up again at the November meeting.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is a resolution of the village of Bensonville, DuPage, and Cook County, Illinois approving a credit or debit card acceptance and convenience fee policy. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Lisa, we have discussion on this?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees. This resolution is being brought to you tonight to address implementing a convenience fee for village services paid with either a debit or a credit card. Implementation of a convenience fee will ensure that the actual costs of processing a debit or a credit card payments are covered by the users rather than subsidized by all the taxpayers. If the board approves this resolution, the village will notify the stakeholders of the convenience fee by posting an announcement on the village website, in addition to including a notice in the water bills, and displaying notifications at all payment locations where accepted within the village. Staff respectfully requests approval of this resolution establishing a credit and a debit card acceptance and convenience fee policy for payments made for villages' services as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Just so everybody knows, I mean, everybody does convenience fee. One of the reasons is a business comes in and pays a hundred thousand dollar water bill on a credit card, that business will get the points or the miles or the money, but we pay the 3% on that hundred thousand dollars. So that's not fair to the village or its taxpayers. So it should go to the person who pays it.
Is that what it is, is 3%?
So there's an average, it depends on if you're paying with Discover, with Visa, so it varies. So 3% is an average. But I also do want to point out that recreation also is charged by ActiveNet if they accept credit cards for their services. So they would have a pass-through charge, and I think their percentage is a little bit higher, it's 3.4882%, and that's from ActiveNet. ActiveNet would be charging the village. The village would then pass that through, but then, you know, once it's approved, Sean will also have that notification that if they are paying by debit or credit card, that they will be charged a convenience fee, so they know ahead of time. So the 5% that our attorney worked on, that's the maximum, but we determined with the other credit card companies, that 3% is really the average that the other municipalities are charging for the convenience fee.
Now, with, when it goes like over to Sean's department and that, and there's people are buying food or whatever over there, will we be telling them that, hey, there's going to be a convenience fee here?
It will be, every place that we have payments accepted, there will be the convenience fee that will be posted, so everybody will be notified.
So it's just going to be a sign?
There's going to be a sign there, right. And so we're, just so you know, we're in the process, I'm working with our software vendor because they're trying to get things revamped on their side, so this isn't going to take effect right away. We have to work and get things ironed out and make sure proper notifications are had. So this is just for your approval, so that once we do have your approval, then we can work with our vendors and make sure we get proper notifications sent out. So it's not going to start September 1st as we said it would be, but we just needed to bring it forward to make sure that you guys were on board with implementing this fee.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we know when it's going to start?
So I've been actually working with our software vendor for a while now. It's, for whatever reason, it doesn't seem as easy as I thought it would be to implement it, so if you want, I can let Frank know or Dan, and Dan can then let you guys know. I'm not quite sure yet. It's been a while I've been working with them, and again, it wasn't so we could implement it, it was so if we were going to implement it, we would sort of be ready, but they're still not ready, so we're doing the best we can.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution amending the village of Bensonville's fund balance and reserve policy. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Lisa, would you like to discuss?
Sure. So a couple years back, the village board implemented a fund balance and reserve policy. And so this was basically established to allocate any general fund surplus that was calculated from the prior year's audit from the general fund. And in your packet, there is five different tiers as to how that fund surplus would be allocated. And talking to administration, we were wondering if the board would consider combining Tier Four and Tier Five together. So Tier Four currently, right now, talks about paying outstanding debt, and Tier Five would be to fund any capital improvement, stormwater projects that don't have, does not have another designated source. So what we do when this, when we do have a fund balance, we go by what the tiers state that we need to pay and prioritize. And the first one is if there's any deficits, and then some goes back to the general fund as just a reserve, I think it's 35%. Then the next one is to pay off police pension. So we thought it would be better to come to the board to ask, are you, for your opinion on whether you want to pay debt off or whether it wants to go to a capital project? Because currently, right now, we, the village is pretty healthy, and we don't have a lot of debt obligations. We do with TIF funds and SSAs, but not specifically solely dedicated to the village. So we want to do, instead of just putting it into the debt service fund balance, we wanted to give you the option of either, again, putting it into the debt service fund balance or paying off a capital project. So again, this is something that, once the audit is completed, we will be bringing this to you to show you how we're breaking it down and make sure that we get your approval and that you're on board on how that we're going to spend that surplus, if there is a surplus from the prior year.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Public Works is a resolution authorizing the award of a construction contract to Chicagoland Paving Contractors Incorporated of Lake Zirk, Illinois for the 2025 MFT pavement patching program and not exceed an amount of $200,000. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second. Being a motion is second, do we have discussion, Joe?
Yeah, so last month, if you remember, we allocated $300,000 of general maintenance funds out of our MFT fund with IDOT. I told you I'd be back with our construction projects to spend that $300,000. So this is the first of two tonight. This is our pavement patching program. We do it every year to do large-scale patching on roadways that are approaching their end of their useful life to get them to pass through a few more years. The map on the screen right now is kind of the allocated areas that we're going to be in today, or this year, it's pretty much all over town. The program provides, again, us to extend the life for at least a couple more years before they get into the program. So the project was advertised both locally and in our IDOT bulletins. Bids were received and opened on August 5th with five bids opened. Chicagoland Paving Contractors submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $165,000. Staff has requested to increase that amount to the $200,000 we allocated, we can get more patching done. Again, when we do put together design plans, we are estimating how much we can get done at the, what we think the going rate's going to be. We got better pricing, therefore, we'd like to get a little bit more patching done for the $200,000. So with your approval, we'd be signing a contract with Chicagoland Paving for the full $200,000 to get a little bit extra patching done this year.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the award of a construction contract to Nardulie, Construction Company Incorporated for Chicago, Illinois, for the 2025 MFT sidewalk removal and replacement program and a not exceed amount of $100,000. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Joe, discussion?
Yep, so similar project, this is our sidewalk removal and replacement program. Again, we allocated $100,000 last month, went out to bid, opened bids on August 5th. On our duly construction, submitted the lowest bid in the amount of just over $72,000. Again, we'd like to increase that to the full $100,000 amount to get some extra sidewalks replaced. Staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a design engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the CDBG roadway and water main improvement Belmont, Addison, and Center, and a not exceed amount of $145,501. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Joe, discussion?
Yep, so last August, August 24, the village applied for DuPage County Community Development Block Grant Funds for this project. Village was awarded $600,000 of community development block grant funds. The total project cost right now is about $2.7 million, so it's just a little chunk of money that we're getting for free. The complete scope of work is going to include installation of approximately 3,500 linear feet of eight- and 12-inch water main, installation of approximately 1,000 feet of new storm sewer, and I will add, this was one of the areas that flooded a couple weeks ago during the rain, so it's nice that I can bring this to you so quickly after that storm event and hopefully solve that storm problem. We'll have some roadway pavement reconstruction, curb and gutter replacement, spot sidewalk replacement, driveway replacement, ADA sidewalk upgrades, and landscape. As I mentioned, the total construction cost is estimated to be about $2.76 million at this point. Staff is seeking approval to begin the design engineering on this project so we can get it done in 2026. EEI is the desired firm. They've done our last two community development block grant design projects in '24 and '25. Their proposed scope includes survey, geotechnical investigation, environmental testing, utility coordination, design of plans, preparation, construction specifications, cost estimates, bidding assistance, and coordination with DuPage County on the grant. After negotiations, the fee proposed to perform the design is $145,501. This is about 5.3% of the construction cost and falls within our range. So staff does recommend approval of this design contract.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing a Phase One Design Engineering Services Agreement with Thomas Engineering Group, LLC for the Spruce Avenue Reconstruction STP project and a not exceed amount of $175,475. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Joe, discussion?
Yeah, so this project is Spruce Avenue from Brookwood all the way up to Foster. We applied for STP funds in the last call in 2024. Unfortunately, we were just below the line and we were put on the contingency list. There's no guarantee that we will get funds on the contingency list. So it's our, we're going to go ahead and reapply for this, and one of the things we thought we could score better on is if we actually started some of the design and had some Phase One Design Engineering completed. There's a category in there for project readiness, we would actually get three extra points. We think that'll put us over the edge and get the funding in the next call. So it's a project we're going to do eventually. We'd like to get started with some Phase One Design Engineering. If we start putting toward this, our application will be better, and hopefully we get some good 80% surface transportation funds for this project. So we'd like to go ahead and start that Design Engineering Phase One with Thomas Engineering Group. Thomas was the one that actually put forth the application for us last time, they'll put forth the application again, but we want to get some of this Design Engineering started, get our kickoff meeting with IDOT, and get the project rolling. Similar scope of work as the last job, a lot of Phase One work, design, investigation, environmental work. After negotiations with Thomas, the fee proposed to perform the work is $175,475. It's about 7% of the estimated $2.5 million project cost for this one. So staff does recommend approval for this project.
Questions from the board?
When do you think, Joe, it'll be reapplied then? How long, when's the next time it will come around then?
So in 2026 is the next call for projects, that'll be up through 2028. So we're hoping that we might have like a 2028 construction season.
Okay.
Three points is important.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax? Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Five, resolution authorizing the execution of a standard agreement provisions for joint improvement project off the state highway system with the Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT for property acquisition in the village's name and cost for the Evergreen Street Reconstruction STP project. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, Joe, would you like to discuss this?
I don't even know if I can read that again.
I know.
Um, but there's two of them in a row, so you have to do it a second time. So we have two STP projects on the books right now. Uh, both of these projects were approved for phase-two design engineering already earlier this year. We expect to go to construction in two thousand twenty-seven for both of them. They are the Green Street Reconstruction and the Evergreen Reconstruction. Um, again, we are anticipating to have to, uh, go out and get property acquisition, temporary easements, permanent easements right-of-way in order to construct these projects. Because they have surface transportation funds, we are required to use federal and state requirements. So what's in front of you today for both of these projects is an agreement that the village will secure the right-of-way, the temporary easements, the permanent easements, in our own name, with our own money. Um, so it's just, uh, it's a one-page agreement with IDOT that they're requiring of all of their federally funded projects these days.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six, resolution authorizing the execution of a standard agreement provisions for joint improvement project off the state highway system with the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, for property acquisition in the village's name and cost for the Green Street Reconstruction STP project. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
There are a second.
Second.
Joe?
Ditto.
Got it.
So he explained both of them at once, I really understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Seven is resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the two thousand twenty-five water sewer rate and pretreatment surcharge rate study in the not exceed amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There are a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, so it's been over ten years since we actually did a third-party water and sewer rate study. Uh, these studies are used to really take a good look at what we are spending in our water fund and in our sewer fund. Um, over the past ten years, we've done some very modest increases in our water sewer rates. Those are typically tied to the DuPage Water Commission cost of water increases. Um, what we'd like to do now, um, especially with some of our capital improvement projects that are coming up, um, the lead service line projects that are gonna be required and mandated for us to do, we wanna get a good look at what our fund is, uh, currently bringing in and how much of our expenses are going out. Um, so a third-party investigation is always a better way to go, so nobody thinks there's any funny business going on. Um, Baxter and Woodman did our last water and sewer rate study. We're also going to this time work on a pretreatment study as well. So our pretreatment program is money we collect from our heavy industrial users, basically our businesses in town that discharge heavier waste to our wastewater treatment plant. They get charged a surcharge every month with their water bill. We have not audited and gone through and looked at the cost of the pretreatment program in over eleven years. So we're gonna combine these two water sewer rate studies and the pretreatment study into one, uh, report that Baxter and Woodman will provide for us. The proposed scope is gonna include establishing of the financial models that they'll need to put together a recommendation, develop and discuss preliminary rate structures with the village team, evaluate the rate increases impacts on our customer bills. Obviously, these are gonna be some potentially pretty heavy increases in our water and sewer bills to our customers. Um, again, mostly due to mandates that we can't control and the rising cost of personnel and operations. And then they're gonna do a rate study report and a presentation to the village board.